Just want to thank everyone for being patient. I'm an on-time kind of guy, but I gotta wait for at least one more person. We need five for a quorum. Staff, are you ready?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, I'd like to call to order the March 3rd, 2025 Richland County Planning Commission meeting. Staff, please confirm the following. In accordance with the Freedom of Information Act, a copy of the agenda was sent to the news media, persons requesting notification, and posted on the bulletin board located in the county administration building. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Staff, can you please take attendance for today's meeting?
All right, Yonky?
Here.
Frierson?
Yeah.
Johnson? Duffy? Metz? Durant? Taylor?
Here.
Zirks?
Here.
Grady?
Here.
All right, we have a quorum.
Thanks, staff. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the March 3rd, 2025 Richland County Planning Commission meeting. As planning commissioners, we are concerned residents of Richland County who volunteer our time to thoroughly review and make recommendations to county council. Our recommendations are to approve or deny zoning map amendment requests. Per Title VI, Chapter 29 of the SE Code of Laws, planning commission may also prepare and revise plans and programs for the development or redevelopment of unincorporated portions of the county. Once again, we are a recommending body to county council, and they will conduct their own public hearing and take official votes to approve or deny map amendments and text amendments on a future date to be published by the county. Council typically holds zoning public hearings on the fourth Tuesday of the month. Please check the county's website for updated agendas, dates, and times. And please take note of the following guidelines for today's meeting. Please turn off or silence any cell phones. Audience members may quietly come and go as needed. Applicants are allowed up to two minutes to make comments. Citizens signed up to speak are also allowed two minutes each. Redundant comments should be minimized. Please only address remarks to the commission, and do not expect the commission to respond to questions from the speaker in a back-and-forth style. That's not the purpose of the meeting. Please no audience-speaker exchanges. No audience demonstrations or other disruptions to the meeting are permitted, nor are comments from anyone other than the speaker at the podium. Please remember that the meeting is being recorded. Please speak into the microphone and give your name and address. Abusive language is inappropriate and will not be tolerated. Please don't voice displeasure or frustration at the recommendation while the planning commission is still conducting business. If you have any questions or concerns, you may contact the Richland County Planning Staff down below here. This will move us on to number three in our agenda, which is additions or deletions. Are there any motions, commissioners, for additions or deletions to the agenda today? Staff, are there any changes to the agenda?
There'll be a couple of edits throughout the agenda, but I think we can actually wait until we get to the individual cases for those.
Okay, we can move on then to item four on the agenda, which is the approval of the minutes. As we've been reviewing these, we see this is the first half. It happened to stop at page 100. So can we go ahead and approve partial minutes, staff? What do we do with this? Or should we hold off till next month?
Go ahead and repeat, Eddie.
We noticed in our minutes that it stopped at page 100, not at the end of the meeting. There would be more minutes to follow.
Okay, sorry about that. That can probably just wait till next month.
Thank you, staff. Hey, we'll move on to item five then, which is our consent agenda. Typically, I would take time to explain the consent agenda. We have people sign up to speak for every property tonight, so we're only going to use the consent agenda for road names. This allows us to quickly make a motion and pass the road names. If I have a second, the chair would like to make a motion to pass along the consent agenda with just the road names on there. Yes, Commissioner Johnson?
Do we need number five, that someone's in opposition or just in for for number five?
There are many for number five in opposition. So even though the recommendation is compliant, yes. So that's why we need to pull it. Thank you. So we'll be talking about every case tonight. Okay, there's a motion on the floor to pass a consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Grady. Staff, can you please take a vote?
Those in favor of the consent agenda? Zirks?
Aye.
Frierson?
Aye.
Yonky?
Aye.
Grady?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you, staff. We'll now get rolling to item 5B, our map amendments for today. Case number one, I'll pass it over to staff.
I think one of the things, sorry, before I actually get into the case, just want to make sure we pointed out something that you may have noticed in this particular agenda, that we don't reference staff's recommendations on these anymore. We've actually just, as you can see, re-identified this as just whether the request is in compliance or not compliant with the comprehensive plan. I think that kind of gives some clarity, because I think at some point, people were thinking that staff was actually sitting now debating whether a case should be approved, when everything that we base it on is really based on the comprehensive plan. And it's more of a just a reminder to planning commission and also to county council that this is what was adopted back in 2015 for these particular areas of the request. And we're just letting them, just again, just a reminder of what the comprehensive plan, especially the future land use called for, for that development of that area. And we just wanted to make sure that it was understood that this is a staff, but it's just a reminder of what the comprehensive plan recommends.
Right.
Okay. First case, this case 25-006 MA. The applicant is Denise M. Canarella. And the location is 1620 Dutch Fork Road. The applicant is requesting to rezone 1.65 acres from residential transition RT to general commercial GC. The request has been determined to be not compliant with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan. So just kind of go into the conclusion, which is on page five, that the proposed zoning again is not compliant with the objectives of the neighborhood medium-density designation in the comprehensive plan. The requested map amendment does not align with the non-residential guidelines and recommendations for this designation. The proposed zoning designation would encourage uses that are inconsistent with the plan's recommendations. In addition, although the subject site is located along a main road corridor, it is not situated within a contextually appropriate distance from the intersection of a primary arterial as recommended by the plan. Wanted to note that the majority of the parcels north of Dutch Fork Road are either zone general commercial or contain non-conforming commercial uses on parcels not designated for those uses. For approval of requested zoning would create a designation compatible with adjacent zoning and allow uses consistent with those established on surrounding parcels.
Thank you, staff. Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff?
Question.
Yeah, Commissioner Taylor?
Just curious, when I was looking at the packet, the tables are no longer in there. Is that deliberate?
That was just, I'm sorry, that was a little oversight on our part.
That's fine, just, I didn't know if we were changing that style.
No, no, that wasn't the intent, I will tell you that we were, at least I can speak from a staff, we got a little excited because we could actually print these and staple them. Our printer, once you go over 100 pages, it does it. And I couldn't figure it out until later after they'd been delivered and I spoke to Chairman Yonky, and I realized, ah, that's why it was something. But I apologize, but those will be a part of your package going forward.
I'm guessing that's what might have happened with our notes as well.
I believe so, yes.
With that, I'm going to go to Commissioner Frierson?
We have one person who has signed up to speak, the applicant Denise Canarella.
Come on down to the podium, please, thanks.
Thank you for looking at my case. And I want to thank Jason Branham and the Richland County Planning Commission.
Go ahead and start with your name and address, and then you'll have two minutes. Go ahead.
Denise M. Canarella. And my mailing address is PO Box 232, Irma, 29063. And this property in question is at 1620 Dutch Fork Road. And the reason I'm asking for this rezone is to improve my property in order to develop it in the future. I believe it meets the necessary criteria to do so. And hopefully, it will fit in with the county's vision for this area. It will make it compatible with adjacent zoning and consistent with the current surrounding parcels. And this is why I requested zone general commercial in order to move forward with developing my property. Thank you.
Thank you. Sign up to speak?
We have no other people who've signed up.
Thanks, Commissioner Frierson. This is now open on the floor for discussion, commission? And again, any questions for staff?
I have a question for staff. These are rollover RTs, I'm guessing from the old LDC? As you look at the map, it looks like that's what's going on in this area. Maybe we would be concerned about leapfrogging here? Because we do see general commercial to the east?
There is general commercial to the east, and as stated previously, there's a lot of non-conforming uses in the particular area, particularly those as everybody's looking kind of that green color, but which is for residential transition, and that was formerly zone rural. As stated, again, these uses are non-conforming just basically because of the uses on the property that is not allowed by the current zoning of it.
So the use is not conformed to the RT?
Yes, so basically, everything you see in the green in the general area of the request is not allowed under the RT.
We're missing some of the uses in our packet this week. Would it be allowed in the GC?
Yes.
Thanks, staff. Thoughts from the commission? Commissioner Grady?
Thank you. Hearing no other discussion, I'd like to make a motion that we advance case 25-006 MA to county council with a recommendation of approval. The rationale being that the parcel in question is adjacent to other general commercial properties, and the change would change a non-conforming use to a conforming use.
Thank you, Commissioner Grady. We have a motion for approval. Do we have a second? Got a second from Commissioner Taylor. Okay, with a motion and a second for approval, staff, can you please take a vote?
Those in favor of the motion for approval of case 25-006 MA? Grady?
Aye.
Zirks?
Aye.
Taylor? Johnson?
Aye.
Frierson?
Aye.
Yonky?
Aye.
And motion passes.
Thank you, commission, thank you, staff. This goes to recommendation to the county council for approval. They will hear this at their next zoning public hearing. Staff, what's the date on that one?
On March 25th.
March 25th? That's usually a seven o'clock meeting?
It is seven o'clock, yes.
In these same council chambers? Thank you. We'll move on to our next case then? Case number two?
Next item, this case 25-007 MA. The applicant is Susan Clements, and the location is 1531 Washlever Road. The applicant is requesting rezone three acres from homestead designation, which is HM, to residential transition RT. It's been determined that the request is not compliant with the recommendations and objectives of the comprehensive plan. The proposed zoning is not compliant with the rural large lot designation of the comprehensive plan. And according to the plan, smaller lot subdivisions are not an appropriate development type. And the requested zoning allows for a minimum lot size that does not support the recommended or desired land uses for this designation. Additionally, the proposed map amendment is inconsistent with the residential agricultural guidelines and recommendations for this area. Now, while the requested map amendment does not comply with the rural large lot designation recommendations, its approval will permit lot sizes and uses that are consistent with the character of the surrounding parcels.
Thank you, staff. Christian, any questions for staff? Hearing none, Ms. Frierson?
We have one person, the applicant Susan Clements.
Good evening. My name is Susan Clements, and I'm at 1531 Washlever Road, Little Mountain, South Carolina. And I'm here today to respectfully request an amendment to the zoning ordinance of my property with the goal of reverting that zoning designation from HM to RT. This request is deeply personal to me and my family. We've lived at this property for over 20-plus years and have always cherished the community and the surrounding area. Our goal, my husband and I, is to be able to provide a piece of our land to my son and his young family for them to build their home and live next to us. We hope to keep our family close and support one another. The land we are requesting to carve out is approximately one, one and a half acres. It is currently zoned at HM. And as I understand it from our survey requests, the recent zoning that took effect last March now requires us to have the 1.52. And with our current property, our entire property only being three acres, that doesn't leave enough for us to split it evenly. So we believe that reverting back to the RT would be more appropriate and in harmony with the surrounding properties, which are primarily residential. Allowing the zoning change would not only facilitate the construction of a home for our son and his family, but it would also maintain the area's residential character and contribute to the community's overall well-being. In conclusion, I just kindly ask the commission to approve the zoning amendment for my property to allow us to break off this and gift it to my son. The request is in line with the overall character of the area and would have a positive impact on both our family and the community. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for coming out tonight. Ms. Frierson, is there anyone else sign up to speak?
No, she's the only person.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, commission, this is now open on the floor for discussion. Yes, Commissioner Grady?
Question for staff on this. So the, let me just make sure I have this right. So the Future Land Use Map designates this area as rural large lot, correct?
That is correct.
So the maximum allowable density in an RT is one unit per acre?
That's correct.
Perhaps I have not lived in a representative sample of places, but an acre seems like a large lot to me. What is the minimum lot size required to count as large?
It's a good question. So I think one of the issues that, you know, again, as a staff, when we look at these things, or each request that comes in, is that we're still trying to, you know, prepare a staff report and determine compliance upon a comprehensive plan that was done in 2015. In the meantime, we've adopted new land development code with new zoning designation. So this, a lot of times, there's not a true mix, a match for what is an appropriate zoning designation in these areas now. One of the things that we looked at when looking at what is a rural large lot is we looked at some of the recommendations for uses in those areas. And so that kind of helped us determine what is large lots. When you're talking about, when you're talking about a lot of agricultural uses, farms, you know, forest, those type uses, those are typically what you find on large tracts of land, not an acre, maybe not even an acre and a half. And to be honest with you, it may not even be in a three-acre tract, which actually is our largest minimum in the AG. So just looking at those uses, that's what we determine that in the rural large lot designation, that you will need larger tracts that will support those particular type of uses. We're talking about, you know, again, agricultural, conservation, those type uses.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Grady, staff? Further discussion or possible motions?
Question, Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Johnson?
Right, in the previous case, the, what appeared to be the trend in those areas that were trending towards general commercial supported the adjacent parcel, make that change. In this case, it seems like the predominance is the other way around in that the majority are HM. The ones, those parcels to the fourth and eighth, that are RT, are those recent changes?
No, sir. A lot of these parcels, we haven't, I don't think we've had any really A lot of these parcels, we haven't, I don't think we've had any really, excuse me, any map amendment request for this particular area.
But then I would assume that based on the size of those parcels, that's just a reflection of the transition in the adoption of the new code on those equivalency tables? And that's the reason?
Yes, sir. Now, again, you know, just again, for those who may not be familiar with it, when you know, when we did the transition, it was anything thirty five, any of the parcel that was thirty five acres or larger became AG, less than thirty five, but at least three acres became HM. And the anything less, any parcel that was less than three acres became RT. It became, it was the RT designation. So that's how th- these parcels came to be, the mixture you see of some AG and RT in this area.
Anything else, Commissioner Johnson?
Oh, sir.
Okay, excellent. I I noticed in that explanation, this one is definitely on the cusp. It's at the minimum there at three. So it could have fell into either RT or HM. What does the GIS say when you click on the parcel? Three acres, three acres. Thank you.
Yeah. I'll save that for another time, sorry.
Okay, commission, further discussion or motions? Yes, Commissioner Grady?
I would like to make a motion that we advance case two five dash zero zero seven MA to county council with a recommendation of approval. The rationale being that the RT designation is in keeping with the surrounding land uses in the area.
Thank you, Commissioner Grady. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second?
I do think it is important to put on the record that the primary reason that it is not, does not already have that existing zoning is because of the size of that parcel.
Okay, should Commissioner Grady add that to his explanation since it's going against the comp plan? Go ahead.
Yes, so do I need to say that whole thing again? Okay. I would like to move case two five dash zero zero seven MA to county council with a recommendation for approval. The rationale being that the RT zoning designation is in keeping with surrounding land uses and that the parcel in question being three acres was essentially on the line between these two zoning categories during the last land development code update.
Thank you, Commissioner Grady. Do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Johnson. Staff with a second on this motion for approval, can you please take a vote?
All right, those those in favor of the motion for approval of case twenty five dash zero zero seven MA? Grady?
Aye.
Serks?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Johnson? Fryerson?
Aye.
Yonky?
Aye.
Then motion passes.
Thank you, commission. Thank you, staff. This goes, the recommendation is approval. This will also be taken up at the March twenty fifth county council meeting, right, staff?
That's correct.
Seven PM, council chambers here. Thanks for coming out tonight for that. Okay. Number three is deferred in our agenda. So we'll move on to case number four. And I'll flip it to staff, go ahead.
So the next item is is case twenty five dash zero zero nine MA. The applicant is Luella Martin Bolton. The property is located of McCord's Ferry Road. The applicant has requested rezone three acres from heavy industrial, which is HI, to residential transition, which is RT. According to the comprehensive plan, this requested zoning designation would be noncompliant with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan as it does not align with the residential development goals of the conservation, future land use designation. This designation, along with the Cowasie Conservation Corridor of the Lower Richmond Master Plan, pushes for nonresidential uses and developments that protect and support environmentally sensitive areas. The conservation designation discourages the subdivision of land for commercial and residential development. Furthermore, the proposed zoning designation would allow for development in lot sizes that conflict with the goals of both the conservation designation and the Cowasie, I'm saying that correctly, Conservation Corridor. It is important to note that the heavy, the current heavy industrial zoning does not align with the development goals of the comprehensive plan or the Lower Richmond Master Plan either. The majority of the area east of McCord's Ferry is primarily zone HI with some scattered residential uses and zoning. Approving the requested map amendment, even when considering the prior rezoning of nearby properties, will not result in an immediate or significant shift in the area's overall zoning pattern or or character. The predominant heavy industrial zoning and nonresidential development of the surrounding parcels will largely remain unchanged at this time.
Thank you, staff. Questions for staff? Commission? Johnson, you're thinking about it?
I don't think it's changes the outcome of whatever our vote is, but is but a legal matter. Do we need to amend the agenda? Well, Martin Bolton on being omitted?
Okay, so we noticed an error in our agenda. So for the with the case, no, Luella Martin Bolton? And then Luella Martin Bolton, they're on both pages? What are we missing? Is this from the agenda that's here in the room?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Apologize. So you may have, I think you picked up one of the ones we had out there and we had to make some corrections on that, so I apologize for that. But she has, her name hasn't been included on both the agenda page and with throughout the report.
Apologize. Mention detail, great. Any other questions, comments? All right, we'll go to Ms. Fryerson then.
We have the applicant, Mrs. Luella M. Bolton.
Oh, you ready for me to say?
Yes, ma'am, please start with your name and address.
Yes, my name is Luella Martin Bolton and I have three acres of property joining International Paper. And I would like for my property to be split up into three acres. I have children and grandchildren that I would like to, for them to build or put a trailer on or something like that. Now, if you all don't approve it, I pay taxes on this property and I don't farm it. So I want to know, so you all are disapproving this? I I'm not understanding.
No decision's been made yet, ma'am. It's just, it's according to staff's review of the comprehensive plan, it's not compliant. But that's what we're here to discuss today, to hear from you and to discuss. So, yes, you still have another minute and a half if you want to share about your property.
I I've already said, I think, what I had to say, that I would like for my property to be residential. And that's about it.
Thank you.
That it?
That's the staff. Do we need the exact address? Did you get that from her?
It's off McCord's Ferry Road. I don't know what the address is.
That work? Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Fryson, anyone else sign up to speak?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If if I'm correct hearing, yeah, so this particular parcel doesn't have an address at this time yet. This is, is, you know, east, south of McCord's Ferry.
Yeah.
But I believe what you, when applicants come before you, you're asking them to give their name and their actual address where they live at the time or maybe even a business address, not necessarily the address of the site, if that's not where they currently reside.
Yes, okay, I'll specify. What is your address, like your mailing address for the speaker?
My mailing is, address is PO Box three four nine Hopkins, South Carolina, two nine zero six one.
Thank you so much.
That it?
That is it, yes.
May I ask one more? Do I have a little bit more time? So if this don't get approved, what do I do next?
If if it doesn't get, we'll be happy to talk to her about the next steps after this particular meeting.
Okay.
Um, I think maybe you you can explain to her this, what you, you as a body, what you were doing as far as making a recommendation.
And I'm also landlocked, too.
You bet. Ooh, I know our next speaker.
The next person is Erin Capers.
Good evening. I am Irving Capers and I request that you approve the request to rezone.
What's your address?
Oh, Irving Capers, two zero three Gate Hill Road, Eastover, which is adjacent to the property that is in question now. The the reason I request that you approve it is because I own two oh three, two hundred, two seventeen, and two thirteen and a plus an additional nine acres, which is all in that same area right there. I had two thirteen and two oh three rezoned a year, a little over a year ago, to residential to be able to allow me to be able to build me a home and put up a shop. So by approving hers, that's just going to enhance my agenda to get my other ten acres that I have approved for residential, because I have four boys, twelve grands. So I want to be able to split that up because they've all expressed interest in building a home down there. So if if hers gets approved as residential, then hopefully that would enhance my ability to get the rest of my land approved, for us to combine land, actually attach it to her land. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And and I take note, I do remember talking about this area in the past. Yes, okay. Anyone else sign up to speak?
That's it.
Okay. Okay, commission, this is open on the floor for discussion and questions again to staff. I, again, I'm a map guy by day and looking at the map, this is an interesting area in the county. You look at the map on page twenty four, it is just like a sea of purple. And then when you look at that that conclusion from the staff report, it it almost contradicts, at least in my head. So the heavy industrial in this area staff is not part of the comp plan? Or it is? What do we want to do with this southern tip of our county?
I think that will be determined as we go through the comprehensive plan update.
Twenty twenty five comp plan update?
That's correct.
So while it says noncompliant to the twenty fifteen plan, this is still a good chance of have discussion here.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Johnson.
Blow back in, zoom back in again, please, on that map. What we have in our package on page twenty four versus what is shown on the screen, which is governing?
What you see on page twenty four, we we took note that Mr. Capers' property that he just spoke about was what was coming up as heavy industrial, but that is actually incorrect. His property has, was rezoned previously, I believe, to RT. Yes, sir. So you guys, what you see on page twenty four of your package is the correct map for that area.
And then the parcel in between what the gentleman that spoke and the subject parcel, is that under common ownership between one of them? Yes.
Yeah, it's shown as being owned by the state of Martin Rubin. So it's not. So, you know, I'll kind of chime in a little bit here, time if you zone back out. And one of the things that we always talk about, and I was expecting the chair to actually take this lead, but, you know, when when applying the designations of the comprehensive plan, you know, to our future land use maps, it is kind of broadly painted in those areas. And so, you know, they don't go parcel by parcel, you know, to be very specific as to what the uses occurring. And as you can see, everything along that section off of McCord's Ferry, against east of McCord's Ferry, by the, what's that, Wodery River, a lot of industrial uses. And so I'm sure during that time when, you know, application of the designations that made, excuse me, during the rezonings back in seventy eight, because I'm pretty sure this is probably when all of this occurred, that heavy industrial was the appropriate use to place on that in this area. However, during the adoption of the comprehensive plan, the current comprehensive plan back in fifteen, this area felt under a different designation that does not support the heavy industrial uses. So this is a, this is one of those times where gives us a chance to go back and revisit and make a determine exactly what is the most appropriate designation for this area. And this is probably something that as the planning commission will, and we'll probably bring back before you as we go back and and examine areas and apply new future designations on our comprehensive plan update, comprehensive plan twenty twenty five update.
Thank you, staff. Can you zoom out even more? Thank you. I was looking for that recent solar farm development. You can zoom back in. Question, question, motion?
Chair?
Commissioner Grady?
I would like to make a motion to advance case two five dash zero zero nine MA to county council with a recommendation for approval. The rationale being that there are residential uses in the vicinity of the parcel in question and that an RT designation is certainly more in keeping with conservation than heavy industrial.
Thank you, Commissioner Grady. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Taylor. Okay, with a motion and a second for approval, staff, please take a vote.
Sorry about that. We have a motion for the approval of case twenty five dash zero zero nine MA. Those in favor, Grady?
Aye.
Serks?
Aye.
Taylor? Taylor? Johnson? Fryerson? Yonky?
Aye.
All right, then motion passes.
Thank you, staff and commission. That's for approval. And will this one also be taken up at the March twenty fifth county council meeting, staff?
Yes.
All right, seven o'clock. For those who came out for this one, thank you so much. We can now move on to case number five for tonight. And I'll flip it back to staff.
So our next item is case twenty four dash zero one seven MA. The app, excuse me, I'm sorry. Yes, as I stated earlier, there would be a couple of corrections needed. So in your package on page twenty seven, it states that it's case twenty four dash zero one seven MA. It's actually twenty five dash zero one zero. It's actually twenty-five, dash, zero, one, zero. The applicant is Jared Monkey. Mon, I'm saying that correct. The location is fourteen, oh, one, Shop Road. The applicant is requesting to rezone twenty-two point three, five acres from heavy industrial, H I, to residential six, um, or six. The requested zoning designation would be in compliance with the recommendations and objectives of the comprehensive plan as it supports residential development within the mixed residential high-density, future land use designation. This designation encourages a mix of residential uses and supportive services. Now, while the location of the subject parcel does not fully conform to the plan's preferred development pattern, which, which, which calls for high-density residential uses near or within activity centers, approval of this map amendment would allow for uses that are consistent with the existing multifamily developments along this section of Shop Road. It's important to note that the current heavy industrial zoning does not align with the development goals of the mixed residential high-density designation. Industrial uses that are permitted in the H I zoning district with significant community impacts, meaning noise, exhaust odor, heavy truck traffic, are discouraged.
Thank you, staff. Any questions for staff? Just fun fact, this is the old newspaper?
The old state newspaper, yes, sir.
All right, thank you. I'll flip over to Commissioner Fireson.
Okay, I'm not sure about the pronunciation of the last name, but Jared, is it Monkey, um, Moniki?
Moniki, there we go.
Thank you, commissioners. Um, as noted, I am Jared Moniki. I represent Landmark Properties, who's a leading developer of housing across the country. Uh, we are at three, oh, six, oh, Peachtree Road Northwest, Atlanta, Georgia, three, oh, three, oh, five. As, as noted, we're requesting a, a downzone from the H I zoning to our six. You know, there's, there's really a few key reasons for that. A, it is in compliance with the, uh, future land use, uh, comprehensive plan here. Beyond the comprehensive plan, we also feel that this is gonna pursue as a greater accessory use to, uh, the stadium project investment that USC is making in this area as well. Uh, they have grand visions of making this more of an entertainment and housing-focused district, uh, rather than the current industrial district that it somewhat is. And this also aligns with some of that current housing, uh, focused developments that have already been in place on Shop Road and surrounding areas. So, uh, we feel that the rezone is appropriate for that reason. Additionally, this, this parcel, as, uh, everyone probably in this room knows, is, is sat vacant for several years. The, the impression we get is that it's simply too large for an industrial use, uh, and that a residential use is a more appropriate space. It's as more most for use of the acreage here for residential uses compared to the industrial use. And the current owner of the site has been marketing it as a residential development, because they've had, uh, a lack of success marketing it for industrial reuse. Finally, um, you know, we've, we've had the chance to talk with a few of our adjacent property owners. Uh, we've had a chance to attend a town hall meeting hosted by Councilwoman English. And, and, you know, we were pleased to hear that folks were generally ambivalent or, uh, in favor of the project. Uh, we do understand that there's some folks here tonight who'd like to talk about, uh, making sure that Shop Road gets the, the much-needed facelift it deserves. Uh, and we hope that our development would bring light to those issues as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Leighton Lord.
Thank you. Uh, Leighton Lord, um, council for the developer Landmark Properties. I live at twenty-four, sixteen Terrace Way, Columbia, South Carolina. This property, as Jared just mentioned, uh, doesn't work for H I. It's not consistent with the area. It's too big for the types of small shops that Shop Road has been known for, and it's too small for a large industrial tract that Mr. Price said would probably be inappropriate for the area. So we think it's very consistent with the trend. Housing has continued to grow around the stadium. Uh, there's the gates, there's the row, and now this property. It's the perfect size for high-density housing, which is consistent with the comprehensive use. We have talked to several of the neighbors who are not in the residential world. One of them Hood Construction, the other docks barbecue, and they said they would welcome this use. They see this use coming to their neighborhood, and their main concern is they don't want this property to be vacant forever. And it's a tough property, it's got environmental issues that Landmark's gonna take care of, and we think it's perfect for this, for this project. So we think it's gonna enhance the area, not be a detriment to the area at all. And I wanna reemphasize that those who would like Shop Road to be improved, we're on their side. We'd like it to be improved, too, um, and that would only enhance everything that's going on in that area. So that's it. We're here for any questions that you have.
Thank you so much. Person?
Okay, next we have Jennifer Boone Donnelly.
Mr., Mr. Chair, um, she's coming, um, to the podium. Which is, as you note on page twenty-nine of your agenda, um, that there is a planned road widening project, um, improvement for this section of Shop Road through D O T, um, but there's no anticipated completion date.
The Riston Penny Program. Okay, thank you. Hi.
Hi.
Is it your name and address?
My name is Jennifer Boone, and I'm the president of R R Donnelly at twelve, ten Key Road, Columbia, South Carolina, two, nine, two, oh, one. I'm not necessarily here to dispute the zoning change from high industrial to residential. Uh, my concern is to go on record about easement concerns that I have. R R D is adjacent to the property to the west and actually to the north also. It wraps around our facility. Uh, when the facility was built in nineteen eighty-one, we were actually owned by the state newspaper and called State Printing. And that road, there's a dual-lane road that splits between our property and the fourteen, oh, one property. And it was established to accommodate the industrial access needed for both facilities. So when we were sold by the state newspaper in nineteen eighty-six, we were given easement rights to that two-lane road and the service road that's behind the building. So for us, our concern is that that is not a public road, and it's technically on that piece of property. And we just wanna make sure that, um, that road is able to stay there, because it is actually the only access to the east side of our facility. So if part of the development plans was to take that road out between Shop Road and Bluff Road, we would lose access to our shipping docks.
Thank you. Staff, can you comment on that? Where do easements come in when we look at map amendments?
No, they shouldn't come in, um, in this particular case. Uh, what we're looking at now is the appropriateness of that zoning designation in that particular area. During any plans submitted that may come in, um, between, um, county, county staff review, um, along with any reviews that may be done by the Department of Transportation, it will be determined the appropriateness of access points. And also, if, um, if not, then the, this also sounds like this will maybe, um, something to be worked out between the owners of the property that's before you today and the adjacent property that was just referenced just now. But as far as what you have before you today, that's not something that the planning commission will be taking up.
Uh, as, as far as we are concerned with the zoning, if, um, parcel anywhere's changed, that does not affect the easement, you know? Is that something that's taken up between the landowners?
Yes, uh, again, we don't, we don't have the, any easement language before us or something that we normally take up regarding this. Um, again, those things may come about during site plans submitted.
Any questions for staff? On this? Okay, we'll move on to the next speaker. Thank you.
The next person is Jean Washington.
Good evening. I'm Jean Washington, twelve, nineteen, O Bluff Road. My property is on the front side of the national park. But this is in reference to the Shop Road, um, location. Uh, I think that's one of the, one of the greatest historical building we probably have in the area. I think it should be, you know, stay with the zoning that it have. I'm into organic farming biofuel research, where I design a model for the twenty-two thousand students in Richland County. So, you know, I'm for, like, redevelopment and keeping it zoned as is for our incubator and as far as bringing tourism and agriculture back, uh, to the city. I worked on the board, I was on the board, was Dalamo Board, when the Pell Miller Institute came on some years ago. And it was agriculture and tourism. So this would be a great, um, example for South Carolina to be like the leading force in the bringing, uh, not just the building back, but the students, the community that, um, whereas you're training the kids, in my opinion, to be like small pharmacists, if you, if you please. And this is, you know, what I'm speaking of is how we share information. You know, we're not sharing information on the frequency that our kids are in place right now. So we, you know, we're talking about development and incubator for the kids. I just took a busload of kids to the University of Georgia, agriculture, uh, health and science class. I called the president up and asked him to host my program. So we did that, it was very successful. So as far as, like, setting up labs is what we need. And it would be a great location for that, and shortly even more so.
And give me your final thoughts, sir. I'm sorry, that's your time.
No, no problem. Um, I would, I would say, like, as far as being a visionary, being able to work with the planning board, if the pandemic or another situation, health situation comes like that, then we're gonna need, like, a hospital or something related to that to be able to offset what's coming if the planning board is not entertaining anything.
Good idea, sir. Thank you. All right.
Next we have Bill Yarborough.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Bill Yarborough. I live at ten eighty-five Shop Road, uh, the gates of Williams Bryce. And, um, I wanna make sure everybody understands my position is I welcome, um, this development. I think it's good. I think it's good neighbors. I think to get rid of a vacant building and have it full of lively, you know, young folks is a good thing. Uh, we've had that same experience with, um, the other student housing, which has, they've been good neighbors. I also had the, um, occasion to be the H O A, um, president of, of the gates of Williams Bryce when the other student housing was built, um, a couple of, five, six years ago. And our concern when that one was built with Shop Road, it's basically a two-lane road, no sidewalks, minimal lighting, and you're dumping hundreds of, you know, kids on this road. So I was told at that time that Shop Road would be enhanced to five lanes, um, sidewalks on both sides, and appropriate lighting, and, um, the infusion of a, uh, of an efficient stormwater system, because we have none now. And, um, and I was told that that was gonna happen when the other student housing was completed, you know, five or six years ago. Of course, it has not. So, you know, my concern and, and my personal desire is, you know, we welcome these people, but let's don't put their young people on this two-lane road with no sidewalks as well. And, um, and, and somebody mentioned this has been a Richland County penny tax project for ten years. I mean, it was on the very first list, and I think there was a list of priorities that came out the very first time. And this section of Shop Road at that time was number three on the list. So, um, you know, we just employ everybody, you know, to make this a priority, and that's the end of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next we have T. Ward. I'm sorry, can't make out your first name.
Good evening. I'm Toby Ward, thirty, twelve, Glenwood Place. And that, uh, writing is often a common complaint I hear. I apologize for that. I think you'll hear from, uh, the other speakers, too, that no one's opposed to this project. What they are, uh, concerned about and would like to enlist your support on is, uh, sending this recommendation forward, uh, for approval with a notation that all deliberate speed be applied to the, uh, complete, to the commencement and completion of the Shop Road improvements. Right now, uh, Shop Road's just a minor arterial, two lanes with a turn lane, as was mentioned. No sidewalk, no drainage, no lighting. Got a lot of kids there with the row, which I think is five hundred beds. The gates, which is over, uh, a hundred and fifty units. And this project, which, uh, as the staff pointed out, could be as much as four hundred dwelling units. The, the traffic study that was done for the row in twenty seventeen mentioned in that study eight times, eight times, that Shop Road was gonna be improved. That was twenty seventeen. Now it's twenty twenty-five. Shop Road didn't improve. You, you might be interested to know that fifty-six percent of pedestrians struck by vehicles in South Carolina are struck while walking, playing, or riding. And that's what's gonna happen on Shop Road. So, uh, the people that, uh, I'm here on behalf of, we welcome this development to the neighborhood, but we need the planning commission to suggest in the strongest per possible terms to council to please move forward with the Shop Road improvements. Thank you very much.
The last person is Ken Spires.
Thank you. Um, Ken Spires, ten eighty-five Shop Road. I am presently, presently president of our H O A at the gates of Williams Bryce. And just like these other people before me, uh, we're not opposed to the project, but, um, we've got a disaster in, in the making there. Um, if you go on any day, you can watch the young people, uh, walking, jogging, whatever it may be, on Shop Road. No sidewalks, uh, very hazardous conditions. The road itself has been deteriorating for some time. Even in your, uh, the, the planning report here, the summary, we've got, um, you know, a comment, "The district is intended to provide good access and connectivity for vehicles, bi- bicycles, and pedestrians." They obviously are thinking about it. And then in the characteristics, there are no sidewalks along the section of Shop Road, Key Road, or Northway Road. And then as, uh, previous speaker, if you look at the A D Ts, um, in the average of twenty twenty-three, it was eleven thousand, four hundred, with a capacity of a little bit over fourteen thousand, which, after this next project is built, then obviously the capacity's gonna be, you know, punching there over. So that is something else to consider. And again, there's a planned road widening project improvement for this section of Shop Road through the South Carolina D O T with no anticipated completion date. So, uh, obviously you can see the common thing, the concern that we have, even from our standpoint, um, as owners at the, the gates, even the entry on the Shop Road is getting tougher and tougher each day. But my concern, and especially seven days out of the year at football games, it truly, truly is a disaster waiting to happen. So with your recommendation, uh, going forward, we would, we would appreciate any help you can give us there.
Sure, thank you. Anyone else, Ms. Fireson?
No, that's it.
No, that's it.
Staff, could you speak on the relationship of what we do here and DOT and Shop Road once again? I too, uh, you know, I used to keep up the old Richland Penny website until it went away. I know it was what, twenty-twelve, the county approved that? And I've been looking forward to Shop Road. Uh, but staff, could you share with the group what's going on there?
It's uh, it is still on their webpage. If you go to Richland County Transportation, um, that is their page. And you can also, you can also see the projects that they have planned um for particular areas of the county. So um, according to the page, um, they're looking to do a, a improvements to widen Shop Road from, and Tom, if you can kind of show this, kind of, you can use the measure tool, I guess that would help out, from George, near the George Rogers um intersection on Shop Road. And this will go all the way down to, I believe it's um, Monty Drive. They just had Monty on the thing.
It's where it's four lanes?
It'd be um, yes, um, two lanes on each side and um, I think, believe it's it stated a thirteen-foot median, um, of course, in the middle. No particular, no, no dates were, or established of, of, of dates of initiation or completion or projected completions. But um, does seem like there's, there is a proposed improvement to this particular area, Shop Road.
Are there county meetings that the residents can participate in?
Yes. Um, yes, and you can also, and all of the information's on the webpage as to when they have these meetings. Um, and also, residents can also call the Transportation Department to get additional information. I'm not sure if Ms. English is, I think she had a couple of meetings um recently in her particular area in which she asked the Director for the Transportation to come out and speak um on some of the projects that were taking place, particularly down in that area. Um, and also essentially how the penny works, um, as they identify projects and what they, they will do. Um, that may be something that she, I'm not sure she may do more of that. And uh, maybe some of the other council members may also kind of tag on and have more of those type meetings where not only transportation, um, a comprehensive plan um was discussed with the community just to really kind of talk to them about the improvements in the area and also how we're projecting future development and growth.
Are there county council uh committee meetings for the Richland Penny that, that are public or is that not?
They do, they are, they are. Um, we would have to, I need to pull it up when they meet. Usually the fourth, um, Ms. Williams is looking for that information right now.
They take public participation in?
Normally those meetings, no. Um, usually it's, it's just for the meeting.
That would be the appropriate time to help with move these projects along as someone who's looking forward to Shop Road improvements.
You know, you can always reach out to your council representative or the council members. Um, also each of the committees of, you know, is composed of a chair and vice chair and, and members of the, of councils. You can reach out to them also um to express, you know, whether it be your concerns or your wants um for improvements in areas.
Uh, a starting point for any concerned citizen would be the Richland County website under county council.
Yes, trans, or they can go to Richland County Transportation um to get as much information as they can. And I believe they have contact information also on that webpage.
It took a lot of time. Commission, thoughts on the road component of this? All right, this is open on the floor for the discussion of the zoning. Yes, Commissioner Johnson?
Chairman, just referring back to your opening comments that you make at the beginning of each meeting as it relates to this body being a recommending body to council, as it relates to the map amendments presented to us that those matters while we are concerned and sensitive are outside the scope of what we can do. Those are beyond the scope.
Yes. Am I saying anything on the mic? Commissioner Taylor? No, you're good.
I really, um, I, again, very similar to what Commissioner Johnson was saying. I don't even know if anything coming from us holds any extra weight that could, you know. I think what you were trying to allude to is uh the proper venues to go to to express those concerns. Uh, I don't know if um, whether it's written or calling in or, or whatever you have to do or we have to do. Because again, I think it's a concern of us as well to make sure DOT and, and the county council addresses some of the concerns that are coming up with these new developments. Up to and including even some of the um, I understood the concern about the easements or whatever when, when some of these projects come in, but review and or a line on recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. Okay, Commission, let's get this open on the floor to discuss the zoning of it going from HI to R six. Discussion or motions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Cirks, how's it going down there?
Good. Um, just to be clear before I make uh any motion, this is um project number two-five dash zero-one-zero MA, correct? All right. Um, I would uh move that we forward project number two-five dash zero-one-zero to county council with a recommendation of approval.
About a second, a second. Commissioner Johnson?
Gotcha.
And we don't need a, a statement because it's going with staff's?
So, so typically, typically whenever you go with staff's, okay, excuse me.
All right, comp plan.
Typically before we go with the, when you're in agreement with the comprehensive plan, so it's not staff, comprehensive plan, um, you typically don't necessarily make any additional comments. But I guess, you know, just based on some of the conversation that you're having right now, that doesn't mean that you can't make any comments. And, and I know Mr. Taylor expressed um, you know, that, that concern that, well, you know, whether it will fall on deaf ears if I'm saying that correctly or not. But I still think it's important, again, as the planning commission, as you, you know, you may come across some projects that you may want to add some additional comments, just to, if nothing else, it gets it on the record. Uh, uh, or some things that you may see uh and recommend to county council.
Uh, I guess as chair, I would say we're moving forward, uh, we have a motion for approval in a second. Um, and a little asterisk there is that we recognize Shop Road as a concern. And that needs to be a priority for the council to discuss.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Uh, to that end, if there's any other comments that would need to be made um to that or any other subject, I could move to table the motion while those uh annotations are made.
Commission, any other tail comments we want to state to this one? Make sure that there's focus, that there's concern about Shop Road and its priority on, on that list. Yes. As far as I understand, it being a Richland Penny project, county council may have some weight in that with their committees that they partook in.
Uh, maybe kind of offer this um for what you're saying that, uh, that something along the lines of with this approval, you recommend that county council look at making Shop Road a priority because with the introduction of the potential number of students from this development along with what's currently there, that you feel that this should be a priority um for improvements.
Commissioner Cirks, you got that? Go, go ahead, restate.
Uh, sorry, you want to restate that? I'll um.
If you, if you just want to take that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll adopt that language into my motion.
Uh, Commissioner Johnson, you still second? Okay, with the motion in a second on the floor, staff, can you please take a vote? This would be for approval.
Those in favor of the motion for approval of case twenty-five dash zero-one-zero MA? Grady?
Aye.
Cirks?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Johnson? Fireson?
Aye.
Yonki?
Aye.
And motion passes?
Thank you, Commission. Thank you, staff. Again, this will be taken up. March twenty-fifth, seven P M, county council chambers, where you may have the opportunity to speak again and highlight your concerns with Shop Road. So please participate in your local government. It's great. Do you pause for a minute as many are trying to exit?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I think one of the things, um, we may look, you know, I'll get with um Director Williams um on this is that I think if we're looking at next month's agenda, if there's, you know, a few cases and we don't have any other items that we really need to take up, um, that's gonna be a little time consuming. Uh, maybe we could invite our Director of Transportation to come in and just speak to you. You know, it's a world's a body, kind of give an overview that similar to what's been, they've been doing out in the communities. Okay, we, we can just look into that.
I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Price? I'll flip it right back to you for number six.
All right, our next item. Uh, our next item is case twenty-five dash zero-one-one. Excuse me. The applicant is Mark James. The uh applicant is requesting to rezone five point nine-three acres um from agricultural district, AG, to rural crossroads um di- district. Um, comprehensive plan um identifies this as not being not, as uh not being compliant with the objectives of the plan for this area. Uh, one, one thing I want to point out, and this is a little error on page thirty-seven of your, of your package, under the conclusion where, under the last sentence of the first paragraph, where it states that the property lies one mile west of a rural activity center and is not contextually appropriate for the requested rezoning of general commercial, that should actually be rural crossroads versus general commercial. All right, um, we'll continue. Again, it stated that the proposed rezoning is not compliant with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. The desired development pattern encourages commercial development to be located within rural activity centers. And it's just previously stated, the property lies one mile west of a rural activity center and is not contextually appropriate for the requested zoning of rural crossroads. In addition to the comprehensive plan, the Lower Richland Community Strategic Master Plan does not support the type of developments associated with the requested zoning designation within the identified agricultural area. According to the Lower Richland Master Plan, development within the agricultural area should protect prime of farmland soils and soils of statewide importance, preserve existing farmlands for active agricultural use, promote farming as a viable occupation and a way of life for current and future generations, and expand the market for locally grown, locally produced goods. Approval of the requested map amendment will provide for an intensity of uses and development that could be deemed to be incompatible and out of character with the current zoning, land uses, and development pattern within the area.
Thank you, staff. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Taylor?
We know how much, sir, area the um Lower Richland plan covers.
Thank you.
I have Mark behind me. I'm sure he will correct me if I'm, I'm wrong in this, but um looking back at the um, in the application of a master plan to an area of that large, did have staff go back and revisit that, and so the criteria has changed um to be more focused on the application of master plans versus applying it to an area um as large as what was previously shown to you. Uh, one of the biggest issues that we have seen, and I'm sure y'all have, may have, y'all may have observed this during previous map amendments for anything in the Lower Richland area, is a lot of them times that the Lower Richland Master Plan is going to actually be um gonna, it's not gonna be complying or not going to agree with the um, the future land use map for that area. Uh, so, um, there's a conflict sometimes with that, having a master plan at large.
Was it like a, did I read it right? Was it like a hundred and ninety-five thousand acres or what was it? I didn't, I saw you hover over it, but I wasn't sure if the acreage was on there.
Yes.
One hundred and ninety-five thousand, six hundred and forty-five acres.
Everything, yep. Staff, could you zoom the map out a little bit? It's the surrounding area. This fall within the military overlay, that's included in the new land development code.
It, it would fall under um some of the notification requirements. Um, you know, as far as for with disclosure that, you know, it's in um basically an area where there's military activity, but um it doesn't fall under any uh use exclusions.
Any other questions for staff?
Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Grady.
So I'm looking at the uh map here. Um, so a question for staff. The land, it looks like the land immediately west of the site um is designated as a planned development. Uh, do we have any idea what uses are allowed in that particular uh planned development zone?
Forty of our packet. Yep.
We can um do a little more research as to the specifics of it. Um, but usually when you look, when we see a parcel, the zone PD, um, and it's out in the area like this, not real, and it's no residential development, down, that at one time you could apply for a zoning designation for planned development, which was different than a planned unit development. Um, the planned development was more site-specific as to what it was. And so the, the applicant would identify exactly what it was they were gonna do. And so the applicant would identify exactly what it was they were gonna do, all of the specific parameters of that property and how it would be used. So usually it was a single use that was on PD. And if there was gonna be any other use introduced, they a lot of times had to go back through the full rezoning process. And so this looks like it's a partial zone planned development, and is, it's really non-conforming mainly because it's a single use. In order to do a true planned development, you have to have a mixed use on the property. So it's kind of just a kind of a holdover, which probably goes back into maybe early two thousands, maybe late nineteen nineties when this was introduced.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner, unless there's any other questions, move on to Ms. Fryerson.
Okay, the first person is the applicant, Mark James.
Good evening. My name's Mark James at thirty-one oh one Divine Street here in Columbia. I'm not the actual applicant. I'm an agent for the applicant, the owner of the property. And I am actually, with your permission, would like to turn over the time here for the applicant to Greg Goocher with Coastal Development Properties. I think he's got, he's the one who's got to have the most information that you're gonna be interested in. But I'll be here. If there's any questions at all that would come up, I'm happy to do that. The owner of the property is fully supportive of this rezoning effort, obviously, and is optimistic that this is gonna be something, quality development that he would be supportive of. So with that, I'd like to, with your permission, turn it over to Greg Goocher with Coastal Development Partners.
I think he signed up to speak.
He did, Greg Goocher.
Okay. He'll get his full two minutes as well.
Very good, thank you.
Say your name and address, thank you.
My name's Greg Goocher, one oh one North Pine Street in Spartanburg, South Carolina. With your permission, I'd love to give you a handout.
We're supposed to look at the land as it is.
There's a correction on the exhibit that's in your packet that I'd like to give you. I'm the owner of Coastal Development Partners. We're the preferred developer for about fifty percent of the state of South Carolina for Dollar General. We're excited to bring this part, this project to Richland County because we've identified this area as having significant need for general retail and groceries in this area. Certainly, the term that you hear a lot of times is a food desert. There are very few services in this area of your county. The closest food line, for example, is about ten miles away, taking a drive of about, of about twelve to fifteen minutes. The thing that I want to make sure that's clear, I think it's on page three of my handout there, is that on the exhibits that are in your hand, you're being shown a parcel that's about a hundred acres. And of course, we're not asking for rezoning anywhere near that. We're rezoning about five acres, which doesn't go much further back than the clump of trees that are front Garner's Ferry Road. And so this, the highest and best use for this land would be neighborhood commercial or rural commercial to serve the residential community around it. We have looked at the node that's close to those. I think they said it was a mile away. And certainly during a comprehensive plan, you can look at an intersection and go, boy, grocery oughta go right there. Well, when you really get down on the ground and start talking to landowners and looking at sizes of parcels and people that are willing to sell their property or not willing to sell their property, sometimes that's possible and sometimes it's not possible. And we feel that this site really is, is within harmony of the area. It brings some services to the area so that people don't have to drive as far. It will be a DG Market store, which is a newer concept for Dollar General that increases the fresh produce, the grocery, as well as fresh meat in the store. And that is already approved by Dollar General. We have, we are coming if this is approved.
We have thirty more seconds since you passed your time.
I understand. And so, you know, with a, with a road that has sixteen thousand cars per day in front of it, it's, it's not desirable for residential development. You know, an acre lot, house up against the road like that. Certainly, the rest of it might be residential in the future or would remain farmland. But this, that's right up against a busy road like that. We would not be adding any accesses to Garner's Ferry Road, and we'd ask for your support. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Fryerson?
Yes, we have Lynn Renick.
Good evening. My name's Lynn Renick, and I live at eleven thirty Changang Road, which abuts the property in question on the backside. The rural residential area, there are homes that are up on Garner's Ferry Road existing now. There are homes across on three seventy-eight. I have a petition that I've gone around and I've canvassed the neighborhood. I've canvassed Changang Road, which would probably be the easement to that, the access to that site. And we are opposed to any type commercial building on that site. Particularly now that he, we found out, I just found out, that it's a Dollar General. We have a Dollar General in the town of Eastover four miles down the road. According to the comprehensive plan, you guys have developed an area for rural activity for commercial sites, which is six oh one, which gives easement to off-ramps, on-ramps, you know, to take the traffic off of three seventy-eight, which is a highly traveled road between Sumter and Columbia, and commuters come every day. And the congestion coming out the road from Changang or Antioch onto three seventy-eight is dangerous. We have school buses that come through with children. We have the city bus that comes through Changang Road. It's just not conducive for our area. We like the agricultural land. We like the rural residential large lots. If you look and you expand, you'll see most of that. If you come down Changang, we're, it's all residential. There's nothing commercial on residential. The only site that there that is public is the public workstation for Richland County. Everything else on Changang Road is residential. If you look at Antioch Road, everything there is residential, except they have places, they have a few places of worship. On Antioch, they have a church. On South Wind, which runs off of Antioch, they have a place of worship. And across the road from this site is a place of worship as well. So we do not support any commercial establishments of any type within this area. And I thank you for your time.
And thank you for coming out tonight.
Next, Elaine Rump.
Good evening. Thank you for pronouncing my name correctly. My name is Elaine Rump. I live at eleven John Flynn McCord in Eastover. I am also opposed to this. I think the country's the country. For reasons the rural area, trying to get away from all the hustle and bustle. So I would like for it to stay just as it is. So we are opposed to them coming in with commercial. I don't think it would be conducive to what we're, what the environment is, what it's have now, so.
Okay, thank you.
Tatnisha Faber?
Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Tatnisha Faber. I'm at one zero seven four Changang Road in Eastover. I wish I were more prepared for this meeting. I just found out about it, and I'm also getting off of a long shift from work, so hopefully you can understand what I'm about to say. I do not think that adding a Dollar General is helpful to our community. It was important for me to be here today on behalf of myself, my family, and others in the community. I usually like to speak with numbers. I like to have facts and statistics. I wasn't prepared for that today, so I'm gonna have to tell you about my real-life experience. I'm an emergency medicine physician. I've been practicing for over sixteen years. I specialize in rural communities. Dollar Generals tend to be places that attract the criminal element. I'm the one that takes care of the gunshot wounds. I'm the one that takes care of the assaults, robberies, things like that. Oh, by the way, I also work at a detention center as well, so if they're not hurt, I see them at the jail, okay? Dollar Generals do have their benefits, but we already have one four miles down the road. We don't need another Dollar General. In addition, just not only am I a physician in the area, but on my time off, I'm a beekeeper. I have a farm that is about two miles away from this site that you're talking about building. I'm concerned about the environmental impact on my bees. In this rural agricultural area, we have cotton, corn, bees, or beans. The bees that I harvest, they're gonna be, they're important for the pollination, for food crops. I just don't think that this is a good idea for the Dollar General, and I hope that you vote to oppose it today.
Amanda Stansel?
My name is Amanda Stansel. I'm at three forty-one Tillinghast Road in Eastover. And I just echo everything everybody else has said. This is, I travel every day into Columbia. So if I need a grocery store, I stop at the food line on my way home. If I forgot something, I can go to the Dollar General a few miles down the road. I don't think that we need another commercial business. Thank you.
Thank you. Do it like this. Anyone else sign up to speak for this property? Come on down, sir.
That'll work on your handwriting.
State your name and your address.
All through high school, elementary school, all through college, nobody can ever read my handwriting, but when I speak, you'll understand. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm the mayor from the town of Eastover. And I would just like to offer.
Your name, please.
Yeah, James Faber. I live at five twenty-five Main Street in Eastover, down in the center of the town in Eastover. I'd just like to offer to the gentleman from Spartanburg, come on to Eastover. Expand the Dollar General that you have in Eastover. You have space. If not space, there's other space that we can provide for you. We'd love for you to come downtown to Eastover and expand, because I'm in the business now looking for a grocery store that would provide some of the things that you talked about. Additional food, additional meat, everything that you talked about, we could, we could actually help you with that downtown. I could probably figure out some people who got some property who would love to offer you something downtown. So I would, I would love for you to do that. I don't think, and I'm a businessman, so I really, I hate to speak against any, any development. But I don't think this is probably the one that would be, would add any benefits to the community. In particular, those, the people who live in adjacent communities right around it. I think the other probably have to deal with the infrastructure, highways, getting in and out of the highway. And that, that area now is really getting very busy, very, very busy. And so I don't think this would probably be, I don't see where it would add an asset in the fact that you have a Dollar General right downtown and that we're available to help expand, provide services for the one that you already have. You have water, sewer. I think you'd be spending, putting a lot of money in the ground that you probably would need to place if you decide to come to Eastover. So thank you very much, and we would hope that you take a hard look at this. Again, I hate to speak against growing businesses, but this is one that I think that would not have, it would be a detriment as opposed to something that would provide any advantage for us. So I hope you could take that into consideration, vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
He was the last speaker.
Okay. Anyone miss the signup sheet for this, hung out this late with us and wanted to speak? Nope, okay. I'll hand this back over then to the commission for discussion. Questions back to the staff.
Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Johnson.
I think that for the public's reference, I think it is important just for us to note that as planning commission, we have to look at the underlying use of what we're proving from the zoning standpoint, not based on the individual applicant's proposed use. And to do, once it's rezoned, anything within that zoning is then eligible.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. That does need to be echoed sometimes. Comments, commission, or a motion, too? Mr. Chair? Yes, Commissioner Sirc.
I do have a motion, but I'd also hold off until anyone's had. Anyone who has, does have additional comments would like to make them.
Any additional comments? Commissioner Sirc is asking for. No, let's hear your motion.
This time I'd move that we forward case number two-five dash zero one one MA to County Council with a recommendation of disapproval.
Second. Second. Commissioner Johnson with the second. Okay. Staff, we've got a motion on the floor for disapproval. Can you please take a vote?
We have a motion for disapproval for case twenty-five dash zero one one. Those in favor of the motion of disapproval? Grady?
Aye.
Sirc?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Johnson? Fryerson?
Aye.
Yonky?
Aye.
All right, and motion passes.
Thank you, staff, and thank you, commission.
Yes, Mr. Yonky, I would also like to point out that normally you get to this, but this case will be forwarded to County Council for their, at their, for the zoning public hearing to be held on the twentieth of March, seven PM. However, well, also, Councilwoman Newton, who represents this, this area of the county, will be having a town hall meeting to, for any cases in her area, which would include this one on the thirteenth of March at six PM at the Garner's Ferry Adult Activity Center. You know, that town hall actually gives the applicant and the community a chance to engage in some discussion. It's not necessarily, you know, for them to make a decision whether they want it or not, but it all, but it does give them an opportunity to get additional information that we may not be able to offer, or this may not be the arena to actually offer that type of discussion.
The town hall date and time again?
Yeah, again, it's gonna be March the thirteenth at six PM at the Garner's Ferry Adult Activity Center.
Thank you, staff. That's our last map amendment case for tonight. We do still have more work on our agenda. People are welcome to stay or take off if they'd like. These meetings get late, we understand. We'll give staff a minute to get ready for the next one, which will be our overlay district discussion. Have you ready to continue on? Matthew, you ready to continue on?
Yes, we're good to continue.
Proud we still have one concerned citizen in the back there. You gonna stay to the end with us?
Alright.
Mr. Price? Are, are you on your way to go get pizza?
Alright, good afternoon, um, members of the commission. We're here today to talk about the next steps in the adoption of the neighborhood character overlay district for the Olympia area. We've conducted, uh, at least two public meetings in the Olympia area. One with the Olympia Association, and then we held another public meeting to present the architectural guidelines that are in the overlay district. And we've gotten feedback from those residents. Most of the feedback would relate to, um, the actual implementation and how we would implement it procedurally, but not a lot of negative feedback regarding the actual architectural standards. And so before, uh, we have you to deliberate it and potentially make a motion, move this on to county council for review, we'd like to just go through the information we presented to the residents at those public hearings. And I'll turn it over now to Mark Riedelhofer.
Thank you, Director Williams. My name is Mark Riedelhofer, uh, comprehensive planner. Um, so this is a presentation that we gave in a public meeting to, um, in the Olympia neighborhood back at the end of January, um, with very minor, um, changes to this presentation, uh, for, for you all. So for the purpose of the overlay, we are wanting to enact it in order to preserve and protect the architectural style and characteristic of the historic, uh, mill houses and other historic structures in the Olympia neighborhood, as well as encourage any change in the neighborhood, whether through new builds, renovations, or demolitions, uh, that they reflect and contribute to the architectural character of the historic neighborhood. Um, and, uh, planning commission is, uh, we've gone over this before with, um, when we initially brought the overlay to you last year. Um, but as far as how the overlay is applicable and how are we allowed to enact one, um, in our, in the land development code, it allows us to enact a neighborhood character overlay as long as it meets certain requirements. One of those being that there is a master plan for the area, that being the Capital City Mill District area corridor plan, as well as the neighborhood having a distinctive and cohesive character, uh, through type of construction, building materials, lot layout, setbacks, and historic districts. Um, so the Olympia neighborhood meets these requirements. The area that we're, that you're looking at and that you'll be voting on for the map amendment, um, consists of the, uh, the area included in the master plan. That master plan was done as a joint plan with the city of Columbia. So the areas that we will, um, that will be in our jurisdiction are the unincorporated areas from that master plan. And also this being, oh, being an overlay, the underlying zoning will still exist and will dictate any, um, anything that the overlay does not, does not cover, or any parcels that it is not, um, applicable to, the underlying zoning will still exist and, uh, dictate the uses for those areas. Um, the, the Olympia character overlay, based on how the, um, it was historically built, there are two separate categories that will, that, um, will judge, uh, applicability for and different standards, um, just based on, like I said, how the neighborhood was developed. So we have split Olympia into what we call Old Hill and New Hill. This is, this is an example of the housing types that can be found in the neighborhood, and, um, we identified the historic houses based on the, um, if they were built as one of these housing types, as well as if they were built within the period of significance. That being within the Old Hill District, uh, being built between 1900 to 1903, or 1914 to 1915, and then the New Hill Houses being built in the 1940s. Um, so what are we, what are we regulating with the overlay? Um, we are, we'll be dictating that renovations to any historic structures preserve the historic architectural character of Olympia. Um, and throughout this presentation, I've just included some examples from the draft overlay as well, um, to reflect, uh, the different things that the overlay can regulate. Uh, so things like, uh, materials for the walls, the roof, things like that. Um, any exterior facade, um, type materials. The overlay will also require that new builds conform to or emulate the historical architectural characteristics of Olympia. So we have various, um, standards within the, within the overlay language, um, that dictate how new builds will, uh, will look in the area, as well as providing language, um, for any kind of contemporary designer style. However, the judgments for those types of, uh, situations will be, um, will be decided on by an architectural review board that will also, uh, that we will also be developing alongside implementation of the overlay. Uh, we are also putting together a framework for demolition. Uh, this is one of the sections that's different from, uh, from what was seen in the public meeting. We develop, we further developed our criteria for demolition based on, uh, advice from the city of Columbia, who also has a historic district adjacent to this. So we've updated our criteria for, uh, what it, what our architectural review board will, uh, consider for any demolition of historic structures. Uh, with the, um, with the intent of doing our best to, um, to prevent any demolition if there are mitigating circumstances that we can preserve, um, any historic structure. Uh, the overlay also can dictate where the structures and accessory lots go on the plot, uh, plot of land. So, um, we have setback standards for the, uh, uh, within the overlay, as well as dictating where any accessory buildings, like a garage, uh, can go on the, um, on the plot of land as a way to preserve the historic facade and, uh, within the neighborhood. We also regulate parking and driveways on the lot. Um, and this is just a, a list of all the different aspects that we currently, uh, will be regulating with the overlay. Um, and anything that isn't covered here, like I said, will go back to the underlying zoning. Uh, so things like density, lot size, lot width, uh, ADUs, impervious surfaces, use, drainage, off-street parking requirements. Those will all fall to the, um, to the underlying zoning. Um, so some of the things that the overlay will not be addressing, um, and these are points of interest for, uh, the Olympia neighborhood that we included in this presentation to address specific questions. Any nonhistoric structures, we're not preventing renovation or demolition of those. We're only, um, we're only putting regulations for renovation and demolition on the historic buildings. Like I said, the density is, falls back to the zoning, uh, the underlying zoning. Any interior, um, in, in, interior designs of the buildings will not, uh, will not be dictating. Um, this being an architectural overlay where our primary focus is on the facade of the building. So interior is not dictated by this overlay. Uh, we're not doing anything with the, with the medians in the roads or regulating on-street parking. Um, and we do not have, uh, this overlay does not provide any program or incentive for owner occupation. Um, and so this is the, just the tentative timeline that we gave to the neighborhoods for, uh, best-case scenario for us to be able to, uh, pass this, uh, overlay. So we are currently in the planning commission phase before we move on to county council. Um, and that is the presentation that we gave to, uh, the Olympia community.
So once again, I'll just point out that you have in your packet the wording that you originally received, I believe, last year before I came on board, related to the specific architectural standards. Uh, that has not changed, uh, except as, uh, Mr. Riedelhofer pointed out, we've got a little bit more specific on the demolition requirements, because that was a question that came out during the public hearings, was how would we look at something as far as demolition? Would we try to prevent someone from being able to repair their homes? Or would we look at how expensive it may be to demolish versus, um, renovate the homes? And so we want to be a little bit more specific of what that will look like before we go to the development review board. And so if, unless there's any additional feedback or research you would like for us to do, then we would, um, request that you make a recommendation that we move this on to county council for their review and consideration.
Thank you, staff, for the presentation, all the hard work that's going into this. Commission, uh, questions, comments?
Question.
Yeah, Commissioner Taylor?
This, uh, and I've been, maybe it's been answered. So this is only for the facade, you said, right? It's nothing interior or anything like that, so?
That's correct.
Okay. And there is no, I've never been clear on, so what if it's violated? Is, are there, are there penalties or, you know, how is it gonna be enforced? What does that look like? Um, I might be unclear on the process, but I'm just not sure, you know, how we'll protect the integrity of this.
That was a question that also came up during the public meeting. Uh, for instance, uh, a concern in the Olympia community is if, uh, someone wants to renovate a property and then they are not as forthcoming with what their renovation is going to be. Um, and that's part of, when I said that a lot of the comments we received back came back to our internal, um, implementation procedures. So it would be a joint enforcement between the county zoning office if it's a violation of a zoning requirement, or also maybe our building department if it's a violation to building standards. So we will be working, um, with various departments depending on what the potential violation may be.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Cirx. Quick question and, uh, apologize if it's already, um, been addressed or been answered, but specifically with regard to the, uh, the, the architectural review boards. It was, I mean, I, I saw the slide quickly, but it, um, you know, it said, uh, that the, these review boards would, um, basically make sure that whatever changes were being made were in line with the historical designs and architectural, uh, designs. Uh, is there gonna be a specific set of criteria that the architectural review board is gonna have to go by? Or is it just gonna be a, kind of a purely subjective, yeah, that looks right, or no, it doesn't, based on the board's, uh, opinion at, at, just looking at the, the pictures?
Sure, so the, um, the board's task will be, um, basically, uh, interpreting what we have for the, or the language of the overlay. Um, and, uh, the things that are more subjective, like whether contemporary designer style is appropriate, uh, with, with the rest of the neighborhood, um, that'll, that'll fall more towards how we wanna design the, how the board, the makeup of the board, whether they have, uh, experience or expertise in preservation or architecture, um, things like that. So, uh, we're currently in the process of developing, uh, how the board will be built and the bylaws dictating it. But that's one of the things we're ensuring is that they have the appropriate experience to make those calls.
Thank you.
And if I may jump in real quick, um, we're also working to create a style guide based off of those Olympia guidelines, so that we'll have a good style guide that anyone who wants to do work in the Olympia area can have something that just kind of visually expresses what's also in the overlay.
Chairman. Johnson?
Question. Will the deferment to this body be tiered such for, for expediting things as opposed to staff level for something? It's about a roof materials. Staff level versus?
Uh, yes, so we, uh, we will be establishing criteria based, uh, for what constitutes staff level versus, um, versus what goes before review board, uh, most minor, uh, things. And, uh, we, we would be able to handle staff level versus, um, any, any changes, uh, or any, any new builds, things like that. We will, um, we will be deferring to a board. But any minor, uh, repairs, uh, renovations using the same materials that, um, that were already present in the building, uh, those are the types of things that we'd be looking at as being staff level. And a lot of that will be, um, reflective of how the, how the city handles, uh, handles theirs for their, the adjacent neighborhood, uh, to, to Olympia.
If their roof is leaking, they can repair it. And I'd have to wait for the next month?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Grady?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I will say this is a topic that, uh, is, is close to my heart. As I happen to live in a historic district, albeit in, in the city of Columbia as opposed to the county. I, I think I've expressed this in a previous meeting. The, the concern that I have is that, uh, you know, the, the specificity of these requirements may be, uh, burdensome, particularly for any, uh, homeowners who are low to moderate income. So in particular, for example, the, the windows, uh, requirements. So essentially, uh, as far as I understand it, the goal here is to ensure that the, the neighborhood appears from the outside, you know, as someone is walking or driving down a street, it, it appears as, very similar to the original construction. Would that be a fair statement?
Correct.
Okay. So, for example, uh, requiring the replacement of windows with, uh, similar materials. I don't think I've ever been able to tell the materials of a window from the street, uh, in, in terms of, in terms of that. So I, I, um, you know, I, I think I would just encourage staff to, um, not be too specific in, in its pronouncements and perhaps, uh, and perhaps this'll come out in the, in the architectural board once that, you know, is, is devised and the, um, composition and bylaws and, and things of that sort. But I just, I, I have concern that, you know, when you look at the areas, uh, in Columbia and, and other cities that are, they're under a historic district designation, um, you know, they tend to be the ones that are, uh, rapidly pushing out the current residents and are, uh, being replaced by, uh, wealthier residents, uh, who are able to pour the money necessary into the home for, um, you know, to meet these, these criteria. So I know that was sort of a rant rather than a question or a comment, um, but I would just encourage, uh, emphasis on that point. And, and I would say, um, to interpret the guidelines in a way that, um, provides, uh, a little bit of latitude. One other question, you mentioned that this only applies to the homes that were built in those particular time periods. Uh, is that going to be? Well, let me ask. So we have, so this, this draft, if it ends up being approved by county council, this will be added to the land development code?
Correct.
Um, will there be explicit language in there that says what you said about, um, only applying to buildings that were built in the relevant historically significant time period? Since it's not written in the, in the statute, or the ordinance, or the addendum, if you will. So I would wanna make sure that that is clear, um, that it only applies to those, uh, buildings within the district and not every building in the district.
Yes, sir. Uh, so in the- So in the current draft we have in, in section 1A, we, we mentioned that the applicability of the standards is determined by the architectural type and date of construction. If, if we should make it more clear, then we'd be, we'd be happy to do it to more explicitly state that the period of significance is these specific years, depending on which, which district, whether Old Hill or New Hill. We'd be happy to, to more explicitly state that in the statute.
Yeah, and I, I would assume that the county in its records would have a list of the, the homes that we're talking about?
Right, so they will be, we'd likely have them flagged based on the year, the build year and where in the, whether it's in Old Hill or New Hill. That would be, that would be how that we would, we would come up with that, whether, whether it's applicable or not.
Yeah, so I, I would just encourage, you know, as, as much transparency as possible, making sure that, you know, lists of properties or maps or other resources are available that indicate what's designated and also that individuals who are purchasing a home that is subject to these requirements, that they know that when they're buying it. I think that would make, that'll make enforcement easier on the backend and I'll make sure that the home buyer is, is aware of the, the historic designation. So I think I said my piece. And, uh, thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
I can follow my commissioners. He opened the door, so let me just walk on through it. But, um, because you touched on something that's a little bit near and dear to my heart. Part of what I think I heard was the details will follow, at least like in relation to things. Problematic or concerning piece, like for example, if it's a two over two window in some jurisdictions, in historic differences, if the mullions on the inside of the glass or, or on the outside matters. And that to me, from a, from especially depending on the income of the occupant, can be an expensive differential from that standpoint. So I think that is something from there. Other is in order to maintain efficiency and not have the ability to substitute materials that still look it, there's also the issue of the energy efficiency and what that means in terms of the actual operating costs of those homes. So while I don't want to sound as if I'm not supportive of what we're doing, I'm supportive of what we're doing, but I also think that it would be great to have the devil in the details to know exactly what we're being asked to sign on to as it relates to our real-world implications from a budgetary standpoint of, of that.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson.
And if I may, again, you know, we're coming to you now to, to let you know where we've been and see if you're ready for us to move this forward to county council. But if you would like for us to flesh out some more of those details, before you do that, you have that ability to do that as well. But we, we're hearing what you're saying, it's similar to what we heard during the public meetings as well.
I was going to ask, what was some more of the feedback from the residents? I heard the part that you had about demolition. Was it generally positive, concerning?
I received text messages from a specific resident every time something is torn down, saying that we are not moving fast enough. But that's just one specific resident. But when we talked about it, some of the same things came out, was just, you know, will it belabor the process if they're changing the windows out in their home? And, and how do we determine if it's a staff-level review versus something that has to go to the review board? And we want to make the smaller renovation something that we could do on the staff level. So that was, that was what we heard. And then some feedback regarding if it's a nonhistoric structure, if it's a house built, I'd just say 1970, that yes, you can demolish that house without having to go through any review process, but anything you build back would still have to meet the architectural guidelines. So the residents seemed comfortable with that, knowing that even if you tear down something not historical, whatever you put back has to kind of fit in and meet that same architectural standard.
Mr. Taylor?
And based on that feedback, were there any, were there any follow-ups that you all had for them on the, I guess, the town hall meetings or the, the meetings with the public? Also, could you bring up the timeline again, please?
The answer is yes. After the last public meeting that we had, we received a list of comments back from a representative of the Olympia Mill Association. A lot of those comments, we responded, they were very specific to the historical type of some of the houses, saying maybe this house was changed a little bit over time and does it meet our, doesn't necessarily need to be on the list? And we responded whether we thought that it specifically still met the architectural intent and so whether we were going to leave that. So we did respond to those questions that we received back from, after that public meeting. Those were the only list of questions that we had received.
But it doesn't require you to do anything to the document based on, you, you followed up the comments, but there was nothing that needed to be added or deleted from the?
Correct. The actual architectural standards have been pretty well received. It's the, how we handle stuff in-house, accepting the applications, the review process, the makeup of the board. What is administrative review versus what is a board review? Those are the details that they brought up and wanted us to take into consideration, similar to what you all are doing.
Room is pretty quiet tonight now. Did these residents, were they, are they aware that we're discussing this? I know I read the thing at the beginning of each meeting. But are there members of this, if there's a homeowners association group that would want to come and speak?
We, we did make them aware, but I'm sure that if they had the opportunity to come again, they would be willing to, to come and speak as well.
This is going to go into the land development code. So this makes me think how we went through the map amendments and text amendments a couple of years ago. So do we look at this pretty much word for word? This is what's going to go into the LDC, correct? All right. So if we're concerned about a statement about windows, this is where we can like scratch it out and write it the way we want to write it. And I'm also concerned that in our packet, we just have the one map that shows the overlay area, but there is a distinction between Old Hill and New Hill. And so just, again, I just have my land development code hat on where we had to have the map be a part of it as well, that helps dictate the architectural design, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I would like to present like a clean package to county council. Like if, if we were to approve this today, then it's verbatim that we, we sign off on this, right? If not, then we, we would also need to be able to give something tangible to staff to work on so that we're not just kicking the can down the road, right? Is this a work session type of thing, commission? Where we would want to sit instead of two and a half hours into our meeting and go through the line-by-line for this, since we're dictating how this neighborhood is going to manage itself? What do you think? Does it hear me at the end? Should we have a work session on this? Do we need to go line-by-line? Do we overall agree? What do you think? Yes, Commissioner Grady?
Given that I certainly would not feel, I, I will just say, I would not feel comfortable rewriting, rewriting a very specific, you know, draft document here that has technical architectural terms that I literally never heard of before we started discussing this matter. What I would suggest, and I can make this in the form of a motion, should people want me to do that, would be that we, we approve the, the, the current text, but that we make a, we, we provide a comment to county council indicating the concerns that myself and my colleague have, have articulated. And that is essentially, something is the effect of while the, the, the broad objectives of, of this, you know, we approve of them, there should be care taken to make sure that the final language only reflects that, that core intent of preserving the facades, the appearance of the facades and, and not have quite as much specificity on exact mechanisms for implementation.
Thank you, Commissioner Grady.
Question, before we make that as a motion, let me. Because I, I agree with, well, I agree with all of Commissioner Grady's statement, but his preamble in terms of not wanting to actually try to redraft something that staff has spent substantial amount of time. But let me just ask a question, I think that's, from my opinion. Page 48, under windows, by way of example, under matching the original, the second line down says size, configuration, finish and details as the original windows. In staff's opinion, does that mean that a wood, single-pane glass window would have to be replaced with another wood, single-pane glass window as opposed to a vinyl-clad window that has the same look as that original window?
So when it comes to those types of details, our original intent and the way we've been interpreting it is that the look itself is what matters the most. I know one of the details we had when we were initially developing these was that obviously the original windows were not as energy efficient and to replace them with such would, uh, could be to the detriment of the homeowner. And that replacing them with the more energy-efficient option that has the same general look to the facade would be something that is acceptable. And so that's kind of how we've been, we've interpreted as far as that goes. And an additional example being that many of the homes were built with asbestos board siding. Clearly, we're not advising homeowners to rebuild their house with asbestos, but the overall look that those boards had can be, can be replaced with synthetic materials. And that's the, the intent that we're, we're looking at and that if a replacement material still emulates the, the original architectural style, then that's something that, that they would be able to do.
Commissioner thoughts, comments? Yes, Commissioner Grady?
In, in response to the scenario that was put forward, I will say that in terms of how it was implemented in the city of Columbia, that is precisely what I was told. There was not a, an allowance to, to rebuild the window with a more energy-efficient mechanism. So we had to, we had to procure a, a specialist to repair the window as it was. And it's drafty, very drafty. So that's, you know, I hate to be the person who's like personalizing everything. But I would, I would definitely say that there's, there's, there's concern there. And I do think that, in particular, that window language, but I'm sure there's other language in here that is similar in nature, where I'm sure it is very well-intentioned. I just have concerns that it would prevent homeowners from properly maintaining their properties.
Echo Commissioner Grady's point. So you mentioned the city of Columbia, city of Charleston, take that up a couple more notches. That becomes a very big fight. And part of that challenge is when you get to the qualifications of the members of the review board, subjective, no objective, yes, the subjective nature that kicks in without some real specifics and guidelines can really tend to very fast. And to point out is really what I'm concerned about is that, you know, what you've said, just getting what you've said integrated into the text in some form or fashion that is a little bit clearer in terms of the intent, that truly the actual matching the exact original, but the intent that looks and has the same aesthetic look of, you can take account some type of enhanced technology or enhanced material that can make the cost of living so onerous.
Johnson?
Mr. Chair, also if you could recognize ACA Jensen, he can give some insight as well.
Hello, Mr. Jensen, how are you doing? Been a few months.
It has been a long meeting, I'll tell you what. Holy cow. Reminds me of the old days. So, thank you, Mr. Chair, if I may be recognized. Thank you, sir. So if the commission has any qualms, heartburn, reservations about what they're looking at tonight, I highly recommend that you continue this or table it till your next meeting so you can come with very clear recommendations to the council on what you want. Because if you pass it on, this is your one bite at the apple. So if you're, if you're feeling reluctant in any way, reticent, then just table it and take it up in a month. I mean, yes, that sets us back, but it's not the end of the world and it's better to get it right than to half-bake it, in my opinion. So that's just my advice to you.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen. This is our first overlay, correct? So we were trying to get this right? As we would do this in other places across the county?
Yes, and to reiterate what ACA Jensen said and, and what I mentioned earlier is that if you would like for us to do more massaging to the language, we can do that and bring it back. It, it doesn't necessarily have to be a work session unless you all want a work session, but we can go back and incorporate your comments and then bring an updated draft to you for review.
What would you need from us?
The comments that I have tonight relate to making sure we make it very clear to the intent of the ordinance and if there's very specific language that could be interpreted as you have to put back exactly what was there before, i.e. certain windows or asbestos planks, that we clarify that that is not the intent of the ordinance. And then also two maps, one for Old Hill and New Hill, that is very clear. Instead of one map that encourages, that includes them both together. Those are the two that I heard. But if there are additional comments, you can say now or you can also email those comments to us and we can get that included before the next meeting as well.
My last comment, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, this is great. I was actually going to think about maybe going to each commissioner and give your comments so we can pass it over to the director and then that's what they can work on. And if you don't have any comments, you can say no comments. But let's go down the road. Commissioner Johnson? Everyone else think about your comments in the meantime, okay?
So just talking to Deputy Director Price, I mean, if you want to send comments to us within the next two weeks, that'll give us time to incorporate it and make any other changes before the next planning commission meeting.
Okay. Any top-of-the-mind comments? Go ahead.
Appreciate that, that's helpful. And just from, I just want to be real clear from, I'm not anti, I'm not against, and applaud and support the work that you've done. You've done the, the big issue of, of making sure that we have public input in the process. I will say what hit me with heartburn was when the chair pointed out that this is not language as a master plan that is generic in nature, but is incorporated as part of land development code, that once we get our one bite at the apple, as Mr. Jensen says, and council takes action on it, then that becomes part of that land development code and, and has a lot more rigidity to it at that point. And so it just makes, with a different set of eyes as opposed to a neighborhood master plan where there's a little text. Just, I would.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Taylor? Top-of-the-mind comments?
My only comment or question based on what was said. So what is our deadline to submit emails to you? You said a couple of weeks, right? Let's get a date, a deadline?
If you could get comments back to us by St. Patrick's Day Monday? If you could get comments back to us by St. Patrick's Day, Monday, March seventeenth. That gives all of this week and all of next week for you to review the information and packet submit other comments. So feel free to email it to us, call us, or if anyone needs to schedule a separate meeting, just let us know.
And the way we're doing it currently is sufficient, right? So even if it's a, a broad statement like has been given as far as windows or whatever else we might come across and talking about, I guess, the intent, you all will massage the language, right?
Correct. One of the things that I like to do, similar to what I did with the email I received from the resident, is that at the next presentation to you all, bring up the comments that we received and how we address those comments, either in the document or if we, for instance, did chose to keep something the same, the reason why we would have kept it the same. That's usually how I try to approach these.
I'll continue going through the row or we'll just go with the emails? Go with the emails? Okay, all right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Cirks, it would have worked.
One, one, one last thing, because it was something that I think was kind of alluded to, and I think that we've seen in, in previous iterations. But one thing that I think I'd like to see, just depending on how many there are and where it all goes, is a like a track changes view of any changes that are made so that you can see, or so that we can see additions and deletions and have specifics when we talk about why those, those changes were made. Thank you.
Commissioner Cirks, anything else on this matter? Commission? Commissioner Frierson?
I was just going to ask, what email are we to use specifically? Email address?
Right, you can, you, our, our email addresses aren't on there. They're usually our, our last name and our first name at richlandcountysc.gov. Or the easy email address is nip@richlandcountysc.gov.
Thanks again, staff, for all your dedicated hard work on this one. And we're just trying to give this the time, I believe, to get this right. So thank you. Does this move us along in our agenda? Anything else on this topic of the overlay? Thank you. Take us to item number seven, which is an administrative review. Are we still looking at this tonight? Mr. Bryce?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, because this was an action item, we will need an actual motion to defer. So if you could at least do that.
Okay, the chair makes a motion to defer item number six overlay district action tonight. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second from Commissioner Grady. Staff, please take a vote for deferment.
Yeah, can you make that motion include both? The map antics amendment, make a motion to defer items?
Okay, the chair makes a motion to defer number six A Olympia Neighborhood Character Overlay Text Amendment and six B Olympia Neighborhood Character Overlay Map Amendment. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Grady. Staff, please take a vote.
We have a motion for the deferral of item six A and B, which is the Olympia Neighborhood Character Overlay Text Amendment and the Olympia Neighborhood Character Overlay Map Amendment. Those in favor of the motion? Grady?
Aye.
Cirks?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Frierson?
Aye.
Yonki?
Aye.
Thank you, staff. We'll head to our item number seven on the agenda.
So the item, the next item before you is item seven A, which is an administrative review. This came before you, we started this last year sometime, and there've been a number of deferrals, either directly before you or they have been done by staff. You know, stated the you know, kind of going over this, the appeal is that the applicant is appealing the provision of section twenty-six dash one eighty-one B three B of the two thousand and five Richland County Land Development Code, which establishes the provisions for the extension of roads and right of way to the boundary of adjoining property. Again, this was, it was staff's contention that, that per that provision that if you're a budding, and I'm going to make sure I get this right. If it doesn't, if it doesn't provide for logical connectivity, and in this case, it was because there was a part of a golf course between the subject property that's being developed and parcel north of that that Mr. John Bakers owned. That there was, that requirements of connectivity were not necessary. Mr. Bakers has come in and made a number of points as to why he felt it should have been required. I know we've had previous deferrals to for, to bring in items such as, I think, a plat was required or some other recorded documentation, which is, we have not yet to receive. That a call was made to Mr. Bakers about today's meeting by staff. He wasn't available, at least we weren't able to speak to him directly, but we left a message regarding today's meeting. So he's not really here at this point. I'm not sure what direction, you know, the planning commission wants to do. If you want to defer this again, or take any, some type of action regarding regarding his appeal. Again, we, we've kind of gone in different directions on this. You know, again, I'll go back to the point of the, that provision of the code where it talks about access to undeveloped property. And that's what staff based their determination on, I believe, during previous testimony from the appellate that he stated. And there were a lot of issues that came about. And I'm not sure, and again, he's not here to really discuss his buckets, tell you that. I'm not sure if any of them really related specifically to this section. I think there were decisions as property owner made, a lot of other things that have come up versus actually looking directly at what you had before you.
Question for staff. For this, we act as a judiciary body, right? Where the county is the plaintiff, or is Mr. Bakers the plaintiff and the county is the defendant?
Yes.
However, we look at this?
Yes.
All right. So I guess I'm deferring to my commission here. Any lawyers on staff not acting for, asking for actual legal counsel here, but he's not here. We've requested him to give us information. Staff is here, but they are actually a party in this. So do we just have to defer because he's not here? Or can we go ahead and finally make a motion judgment on this? Because what we've asked for him to provide has not been provided yet. Just as a Commissioner Cirks, what you think?
Well, in my line of work, if Mr. Bakers were considered the plaintiff and you know, I mean, it's not quite an apples to apples comparison, but if he's been asked by the other party to provide information that would be helpful in moving this case forward, and he's been provided notice of this hearing and he's not here. This would be a ground for a dismissal of the case of failure to prosecute. An apples to apples comparison, but given the quasi judicial nature of the proceeding, that's another lane to
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Cirks. Yes, staff.
Just for clarity, something that Commissioners Cirks just stated. Staff did not ask for additional information. The applicant offered, oh, excuse me, the, the, the Mr. Bakers offered a document and it's the planning commission.
Let's refer to him as the plaintiff.
Yeah, the plaintiff.
Okay.
The plaintiff offered a document that he thought would be helpful and thus the planning commission deferred to allow that document to come in, but it was never requested by staff. I just wanted to put that on record.
Okay, comments, concerns from the commission? Joe, do we feel comfortable making a motion on this or a judgment tonight? Or? Commissioner Johnson?
Individually, I mean, I think the applicant has shown up a couple of different times. And as Mr. Price has said, at least in my mind, twice has said that he was going to produce a plat, which he later said is no longer available. In his mind, positive of, of what would move forward. I mean, I think from that standpoint, we've fulfilled our fiduciary duty in terms of having a hearing present. I mean, that we've procedural process for that. I mean, if the body wants to take a motion or consider a motion, I mean, I can lay out some thoughts of a proposed action.
I would like to hear, commission, do we want to hear Commissioner Johnson's possible motion? Yes? I can see, had nods. Okay. Commissioner Johnson? Floor is yours.
Staff has outlined that upon receiving an application, the planning commission can either reverse or affirm the decision coming from staff. And that the decision needs to be supported by findings of fact and conclusion of law that support our decision, and we need to pass that on to the applicant. From the previous hearings, it's my understanding that the applicant is saying that Linkside Village Development is required to provide a connectivity to the eighty, eighty acre track. Staff's position that is not required because of the incompatible characteristics present, and then the presence of the golf course is then considered as developed parcel, exempting it from the connectivity requirement. The second item, the applicant's arguing that they are being landlocked. The applicant actually had the opportunity to cure before they made the transfer in two thousand and eight of the parcel that now is a part of an HOA. And then in two thousand and twelve, twenty twelve, when they split the hundred acre parcel off. Now, the presence of the easement that is claimed to be made is supposed to be recorded in a plat that he is on more than one occasion said that he was going to produce and has not been produced. The subject parcel and the golf course are both under common ownership. And in the previous hearing, we got into the discussion about the separation between those two parcels being there. The original plan, site plan approved for fairways development shows staff is saying that it was produced March ninth of twenty-two, December of twenty-two, and then June of twenty-three. That's notice to the owner. So he's had three different opportunities to say something. He's had, they've transferred the property, transfers affecting the property twice. And it's, they were saying their legal counsel made mistakes as relates to the plat. All of that is beyond our control or staff's control. But the golf course still presents developed property that provides access to the track. So for those facts, I think this gives a credible reason to support staff's position. And based on those facts, those opt to position firming staffs.
Is that succinct enough to be a motion? Shall we have Commissioner Johnson paraphrase?
No, I think that's fine.
Okay, so yeah, I would ask the commission for a second.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Taylor for us to have favor with the staff on this issue.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Commissioner Grady, comments, but there's a motion on the floor. So go ahead.
So I, I would like to comment before a vote is taken here. So I, I am I, I definitely have concerns, as I expressed in the previous discussion on this. And ultimately, what I find is, is the broad intent as expressed in the, the first sentence of the, the section of statute that we're concerned with. Where it is deemed necessary to the development of a logical road pattern and transportation network, roads and right of way shall be extended to the boundary of the adjoining property. The idea here is a logical road, road pattern. And it seems quite clear from the, the, the shape of the, the golf course and the parcels in question that it is a, an extremely logical requirement to, to place a, to place a, a a, a road that's compatible with future, future extension into the, the parcel in question. I find that it is a, it is a, it is a minimal requirement to ensure that if there is future, if, if documents are found, if there's some evidence produced that makes it such that a road can in fact be built through this slice of the golf course property. I will say, it's a golf cart. It's not like we're, you know, proposing to run a freeway through the middle of a fairway. But I, I would say that it's, it's a situation where accepting his appeal does not produce any, it, it obviates the possibility of, of injury, whereas simply foreclosing all possibility of development in this particular piece of real estate is, it means, it means you can't go, you can't ever go back. So I, I would say that the idea here is, is to make sure that, that things are connected in a logical manner. And I would submit that requiring the extension of roadway would facilitate as such. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner Grady. Okay, we have the motion and the second. So to favor with staff. So I believe we still need to take a vote on that. By staff. Hold on. Commissioner Johnson?
Again.
This is a unique case. Not specifically keeping a Roberts rules as we usually go with, but go ahead.
My colleague makes a very good point, which is what makes this a very challenging and difficult case. Because the other side of your point is, though, is based on the existing approvals that have been issued, but jeopardy is that to those approvals and to that owner. And to that owner? So, now have we rung the bell? Now, how do we unring it when there's approved plans to another owner? And so, the remedy becomes the question, what is, what is the appropriate remedy? And part of the reason, distinction between my position, my colleague's position is, who was best positioned to correct that? And so, that's part of the challenge that makes it challenging. And if you remember, the last time that we actually attempted to make a vote and then ended deferring it, or I shouldn't say the last, one of the times was just that, was that we, they're both very plausible outcomes and we split two to, two, three, whatever the, but, little. Both possible outcomes. So, I mean, I think that we have to make certain, whatever course of logic that we pursue and that we approve, that we've gotten the feedback among those of us, you know, across the board. I mean, you've heard two positions, credible position, welcome.
I agree with Commissioner Johnson. Further comments? The motion's still on the floor, okay? And you can only go two ways with it, so that vote, you can still vote yes or no for it, but Commissioner Cirks? Any thoughts?
No.
No. Commissioner Frierson?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Taylor? We've heard from Commissioner Grady?
I'm good.
Okay. Okay, that's what I'm trying to do. Okay, staff. That's the motion of favoring with staff on this, which would be the defendant, is the motion and it was originally seconded by Commissioner Taylor? All right. And put into motion by Commissioner Johnson. Please take the vote.
All right, those in favor of the motion? Grady?
Aye.
Cirks?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Frierson?
Aye.
Yonki?
Aye.
And motion passes.
Thank you. Fair's comment, here's, we gave this case plenty of time and many of months and we did ask a specific request. That's what I was looking for since the first night. Like, I could have made a motion. Yeah, so, thank you, everyone, for your time, staff and commission on this. We're not done, there are seven we end, but there's, usually the number eight, which is other items. Commission, staff, any other items? Hearing none, moving on. Number nine would usually be like the chairman's report. I think everyone's doing great. Thank you for your time, dedication, especially these extra plans, the overlays, the whole team. I don't want to lay anything else on there, but I do like to ask about a retreat usually because I always gain so much from attending those. It's usually something in August timeframe, so if that's possible and if it pairs well with our comp plan work, that would be great.
I think there are a number of items that have come up over the past year that I think that we can kind of cater a retreat towards, just targeted towards, we can, we'll look to for the August retreat.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so that would, I would then go to number 10, which is usually the plan director report. You guys gave us an extra copy?
Essentially, normally we just, we present you with the actions of council from the zoning public hearing that was held the previous month.
Anything else from the staff? This is when we would go to the magical time of number 11, which is adjournment and we will take a vote for adjournment with way of hands. Hands are unanimous. Staff sees that, recognizes it. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Eight, nine, 10, 11, I can fly. Who knows, all right? If I ever go too fast, tell me, okay?